Been accidents at the Lime and King Street intersection where I would hear the crash and run out and then see if anybody was injured and that sort of thing because it's specifically at that location. On that evening, I heard the speeding cars coming through the 100 block. I'm on the 200 block. You could hear them coming. And then I heard the first crash and I went, okay, we've had a crash. Then I heard a second crash and a third crash. By this time, I'm heading towards my front door. But these pictures, I'm showing five of the crashes. I only went to Jefferson and there were apparently three more up north of Jefferson, right up to Shippen. And they came in with three different haulers to take out the cars, piling them up. Only two cars were not taken out of our neighborhood. We have a working neighborhood and it's a Sunday night and a lot of people were very, very affected by this group of accidents. If you turn the second page, the one actually shows the whole front of the car is gone and it exposes the engine and the engine is pointed downwards. So this, oh, and the two cars what caused it, when I came on my front door, there was a man there who had gotten out of his car. He came up to me and said, I saw the whole thing. And I said, have you told anyone? He said, I explained the whole accident to 911. So they have the full record. And he said, I was coming up on the 100 block and these two cars started, were racing, coming up there. And, and he said, what happened is the car on the left, the car on the right was trying to pass the car on the left and the car on the left shifted right and that car didn't have anywhere to go but to continue hitting all the cars. There was no one in the cars and maybe that's why no one ever heard about this whole thing because nobody was injured. But we're talking a lot of cars decimated. The only person injured was the driver of the car that hit all the other cars and the other party apparently took him to the hospital. I think they left the scene, but they did track that down. And at least one of the drivers has car insurance. So I don't know what that situation, but if you know, a lot of people who don't have a lot of money only carry minor, as much insurance as they can. And, you know, the car is more valuable to people than the insurance replacement costs and often they can't get the same type of vehicle that they first had. And it was sad watching people unloading their cars, trying to get their stuff out before they were being towed away and they had to get to work till the next morning and they have to call Uber to get to work. So I'm so glad because I had reviewed and researched how this all works going to this state and getting this. And I was, I was so pleased when I looked at the agenda online that this thing was coming up. So I put together this thing and sent it out to you because it's really so vital for this city.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President. Sure.
Hold on one second, Mr. Brown. Councilman Prepar speaking. Just one second, sir.
Sorry. I won't be long. You know, so often we forget, you know, we see these horrific accidents and we forget about them a short time later. But about this time last year, two McCaskey students were driving on East King Street towards Thaddeus Stevens to apply for college. They were T-boned at the intersection of East King and Franklin Street in front of the prison. The driver, the student driver was killed instantly. The other, the passenger student went through 22 operations before he was released from the hospital. He's now back in school and he'll be graduating this year. It was estimated that the, the other driver on Franklin was, ran the light, ran the red light at 50 miles an hour going through that intersection. So add that to your list of frustrations. The student who died was my student for three years. I still see that car, that mangled car in my dreams. So again, let's, you know, we see these accidents and then we forget about them, you know, a couple of weeks later, a month later, whatever.
I don't think anybody on our block saw the halftime performance for that football game. Everybody was, they had it all locked off and everybody was out looking at this massive mess. I mean, two of the cars were up on the sidewalk. That's how hard they were hit.
Thank you. Thank you, councilman. Mr. Brown.
Okay. Terry Brown was just, now you, President, now you got the same type of speed of state police. Now, how much, what is the speed of the state police is going? Because people are saying, like the city police, hey, hey, they're flying up, down street when sometimes they don't get the lights on, sometimes they do got lights on. And when they, when they do got the lights on, then it's a different story. When, when you're flying up, down street, I don't know if it's emergency or not, and there's no lights on, right? What do people think? And as, and you pull up the same speed as the state police, but what is the speed is the state police are going? Are they going 55 miles an hour? Are they going 45 miles an hour or what? You, you just pull up the same speed, but we don't know what is the same speed is as the state police? Because, because the state police game is different than Lancaster, than a county. That's what you got to think about. Like going to, that's what, to a lot of municipalities you go to, when they say same, they want to know what is the state police going and what, what are speed going? And don't, and everybody's blaming on, because you see a lot of car crashes, car crashes, car crashes, right? So we're to blame. But see, there's a lot of Lancaster city, Lancaster city people, cops, crashed cars, county cars or crashed or flying them down the street. When they fly and they hit another car, they're not to blame, the other car's to blame. The other car. And they're the ones that did the damage, but they're not getting charged for the other, the other people. That's what you see, say with that same speed, you got figured down and go up to state police and see what the same speed is. Because that's why I said, there's a lot of car accidents down the line. When they hit somebody, but see, and they know they did it, how come they don't get charged? How come they charge the other person? So they get off their backs. That's why, that's why I say with that same speed, you gotta know how much speed it is.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the resolution? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Gray.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Prepara.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
President Raikemuk.
Aye. We'll move into our second public comment period and this is open for comments about issues that were not on tonight's agenda. I would ask that you limit the duration of your comments to three minutes. Yeah, Mr. Brown.
I got to, okay, to the President.
If you could do me a favor, share your name and your street.
My name is Terry Brown, West Jefferson Street.
Thank you.
Now, President, now, now you, you say three minutes. Now, everybody here in the back are public, right? But see, why do we have three minutes, right? Mr. Patterson can come up there, he can talk 15 to 20 minutes. The chief can come up there, they can talk 15, 20, 30 minutes. But why do we have to talk three minutes? You said everybody get three minutes. When you say everybody get three minutes, that means every single person in this aisle back here, just on the left or right, get three minutes. But you have to state down line to everybody what they get, what they got. See, all, all you're doing is embarrass us, discriminate us because we got three minutes. That's all. Now, Mr. Patterson can get up there, he can talk 15 to 20 minutes. And people, and a lot of people wonder thinking, why he talking 15, 20 minutes? And you, and you tell me, I can talk three minutes. Say, we're saying different, three minutes. If he's back in the seat here, right, he just like all of us are public. But see, you got to state the reason why, why three minutes. And, and that had been going on since 20 years ago. Three minutes. You got to state. And that's what I say, all you're doing is discriminate me, embarrass all the people who comes up here and talk three minutes. But rest of the people could come up here, they can talk 20 minutes, just like Randy came up here to talk, chief come up here and talk. But see, why, I like to know why they can talk for a long time, but I can't and other people can't talk. Three minutes, bah. And, and as a badge for, for all the kids, people, for, for all these people here that comes up here and talk, they got three minutes, right? Mr. Patterson can come up here and talk, he can sit here for 10, 15, 20 minutes. That's, that's embarrassing for us. Well, you're doing, you're making us look more embarrassing and for nothing because he's a official. But see, state the truth. You said three, see, you said three minutes for everybody will come and talk. And when you say everybody, what, what does everybody mean? That means everybody here. Correct? That's right. Then why, why everybody talking long? That's, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
About the three minutes, that's all.
Thank you for sharing, sir. Pastor Brown.
Yes, Pastor Kevin Brown, 223 West Orange Street. I'm privileged to give public comments following tonight's council meeting. Although we were not successful saving the Lancaster Regional Medical Center or preventing its closing, the voice of the poor and the indigent here in Lancaster was heard, continues to speak and will not go away. There were very strong and explicitly documented reasons to believe that the indigent and their civil rights were violated by UPMC and the closing of the hospital. The documents and testimonies of high-level employees who feared losing their jobs were not forthcoming and prevented us from filing an injunction with integrity. These documents spoke heavily to the racial mix of Lancaster residents and the Medicaid versus Medicare bias. On this, on this council, we have a Public Safety Committee, Public Works Committee, Economic Development and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, a Finance Committee, Community Development and Planning Committee, and a Personnel Committee, but no adequately defined committee to address the specific needs of the indigent and disenfranchised with regard to health care, poverty, housing, and other subsistence needs. As we look to the future of Lancaster City, I'm concerned about how this city government will spell out how it intends to make provision for the civil and humanitarian rights of the people we love from this community, this particular community, the indigent. Where do the indigent and poor fit in to the current and upcoming economic development, public safety, neighborhood revitalization, financial and community development plans in the city of Lancaster, especially in the light of the closing of a major hospital that served them and was accessible to them in emergencies? Does this mayor feel that she has a responsibility to design and launch projects that will bring state-of-the-art attention to this segment of the community of residents of Lancaster in the same way that Cleveland, Ohio, and the Bay Area of California did in the face of gentrification and other development projects? Will this city government go on record as being a friend of the poor, the widows, and fatherless and solicit the investments of contractors, foundations, and other sources to build and renovate properties that can accommodate those in our community that are most in need and not just tell us there's nothing that can be done? We have several projects that are going on in the city. Everyone sees the Boulevard building and all of that that's planned for that area downtown. But what is planned for the people that are homeless, the people who have health care issues and things of that nature? We don't see in the paper a lot of ideas about what this city is doing for the poor short of a poverty commission. It's not enough. And even though this building that the Historical Society or whatever is proposing to demolish, even though it can't hold a lot of people and all of that, we still have to think about what we're doing with buildings in the community.
I don't want to interrupt, so I should finish your point, Mr. Brown, please.
Excuse me?
I'd ask you to finish your point, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, you know, what we're doing about the poor and the indigent in this community. I believe that we can do more and we should. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Brown. Any other public comments this evening? Good evening, sir.
I'm Barry Russell, Elm Street, Mayor, President Raikemuk, council members. I'd like to speak tonight, just a few minutes, on the talk we've had over the past months on the Citizen Review Board and tonight, this specific report from Chief Burkehiser regarding the civilian complaint process. While he did mention the number of complaints received, given the, the total police involvement with the community is small, I want to say that to each citizen affected by the, by something that has happened, they are important and I would support that these ideas are important to all of us. I don't know how many of you have read or looked at the directions for filing a civilian complaint process, but it is cumbersome, it lacks transparency, it lacks accountability, and that, and I believe that there is no true concern for the resolution of concerns of citizens. Several points throughout the process. The first one, a reconciliation attempt where you file the civilian complaint report. Then there's a verification. A community relations officer is supposed to contact the complainant and come up with the conciliatory understanding. If that doesn't work, you file another citizen complaint report and that involves an internal investigation. I could go on. One of the most egregious things, I think, is that the time for the, the initial internal investigation is 60 days. And then at the discretion of the chief, he can add another 60 days. And once he gets the report from that, he has 15 days to come up with a resolution. I don't have to talk about my particular complaint. I think most of you know what that involves. It happened last November and it took me a month to come to the point where I got a family member back. From the beginning, I attempted to speak to the chief, I attempted to speak to Mayor Sarachi and other administration officials to come to a resolution that was amenable to me, the citizen. And again, I don't have to go in all, into all the details, but just a couple of things about my complaint. I believe there was a violation of my constitutional rights. There was a violation of PA state law. It caused stress. It caused fear of safety. It caused concern for the location and condition of my family member. The most egregious thing was that for over three days, I was not notified that the police had an incident at my home. And as I said, I have attempted to reach out to Chief Burkehiser and others. I am not, don't want to talk against him, but I did ask him if we could have a chat this evening. So I'm going to make a call to him tomorrow. I guess at the end of that, what I'm suggesting is that Lancaster is in many ways a wonderful place to live, work, and play, but we can do better. I would love to be part of improving the citizens' complaint process. Let me know how to help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Other public comments? Yes, ma'am?
Hey, so I just kind of wanted to-
You just share your name and your street.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So Tammy Westfine Street. Yeah, so I just kind of wanted to reiterate like what you had heard us all say earlier and, you know, just really thinking on, on what we would kind of like to at least hear from you all tonight are like some yes and no answers. You know, like since UPMC has announced the closing of a hospital, have you met with any of the board of directors or executives or anything like that? Is there any kind of like idea on what's going on with the property located at 250 College Avenue? Do you know of any kind of plans at this time? And it would really be nice to kind of hear who at this time would support a city resolution for a public health care advocate. And, you know, there's already a couple of states that have a public health care advocate. Pennsylvania doesn't. We do have them for utility companies, but not health care. You know, I don't know about y'all, but I'm kind of tired of like Pennsylvania showing up last to the party when it comes to special, like, you know, important issues. And here in Lancaster, we have the opportunity to really lead the way on this particular proposal. And so I would definitely like to hear, you know, who would support a public health care advocate and by doing a city resolution. And again, just kind of iterating, you know, you know, we are, one of the people we are meeting with is Fetterman and he faced UPMC when he was mayor of Braddock. You know, he was actually willing to get arrested and did get arrested trying to defend the hospital that UPMC was taking away from the people in his community, especially the poorest among them. I'm not saying y'all need to go get arrested and do civil disobedience, but the least you could do is support a city resolution for a public health care advocate and definitely things like making them attend a public meeting because they're hurting us like badly and they need to face us. You know, this isn't a question of this being a private entity. Once again, they don't pay taxes because they're a charitable organization. So to me, with what they're doing is more acting like a corporation and not a charitable organization. So we are literally going to fight this to the very end and it would be nice to go into Fetterman's office Monday and say, hey, you know, I've got a couple of city councilmen that agree that we need a public health care advocate. You know, I would love to go into his office Monday and be able to say that our, our city government's behind us, you know? Because like I said, he, he stood by his people and he got arrested to try to save a hospital from closing. So I'm kind of curious as to what the Lancaster City government's going to do. And I just want to reiterate that quote again because once again, it's my favorite quote from Martin Luther King Jr. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." The people of Lancaster want a champion. Be that champion.
Thank you, ma'am. And I would propose if council members would like to respond, when we get to council comment section here briefly, we can give them an opportunity if they would like to. Any other public comments? If not, we will move into the report of the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. So I know that council comment is going to happen related to UPMC. So let me just say a few things related to the questions that you asked that were very specific about, did we, have we met with them? Is there a plan? What, what's going on with, in relation to the property? We've shared information related to the pilot and council will comment related to the, to the pilot, which is a voluntary contribution that UPMC made to the city. We've had one meeting with a real estate professionals. Mr. Patterson met with them last week. There is no plans for the building. We are advocating on behalf of the building and its future, not knowing what that is, given the fact that we don't own the building and we don't have a legal say in who they sell that to. We do have, there is a process that the city has related to zoning and zoning hearing because it is currently zoned as a, as a hospital and it would need to be changed for some future use. What that future use is and what UPMC is planning, they have not shared with us. We have concerns about that. We have concerns, ongoing concerns about the maintenance of the building and the upkeep of that building. We have addressed those concerns as well as the safety and the monitoring of that building. We've had communication between our police department and the security at the building as well as the fire bureau. That's the extent of what has happened since the hospital has closed at the end of February. We can get into talking about taxes and whatnot. I'm going to let council make their comments and I may add more at that time. To the question about the health care advocate, this is the first I'm hearing about what that is. I will tell you, and to the point of Pastor Brown, health care is not, the city government doesn't provide health care. We don't fund health care. It's not our, it's, from a staff level, it's not our area of expertise. I get and I feel for weeks, since the moment that I got the, the phone call that they were closing, well, actually the meeting, I didn't know until two hours before, the public knew that the hospital was closing, that this is an acute issue. I would like to talk to you, Pastor Brown, about all the other things that we are doing for the lower-income neighborhoods. And I'm now going to turn to my mayor's report, which speaks to some of those efforts in a broad brush stroke, but you may welcome to call my office and set up an appointment and I'd be happy to review with you what we are doing to address housing conditions, what we are doing, the emergency services grant that Councilman Smith-Wadeell mentioned directly supports homeless efforts in the city. I can talk to you about how we are working in partnership with our nonprofit organizations. And quite frankly, I am dismayed that assumptions are made about my intentions or the work that the city government is doing on behalf of low-income residents in the city without the benefit or the consideration to come in and meet with me, of which not a single meeting has been requested. I've been invited to attend events, but no one has requested a meeting, no one has brought forward specific recommendations like the public health care advocate issue.
You might want to talk to Milzey because she told me she's the one to speak to and I don't know if she-
Well, my office number is 291-4701 and you can contact me directly. Milzey is not the mayor. Okay, turning to my mayor's report. On Saturday, the first ever Women of Color brunch was held. This room was full, 127 attendees. It was wonderful. It achieved its purpose of bringing together the amazing power of women of color to celebrate, educate, empower, and share stories of perseverance and survival together. I want to thank our sponsors, Giant, McDonald's, Murray's, Secura, Save Mart, and Penn Medicine. And to the planning team, our staff, the city staff, Teresa Bailey, Sharon Allen Span, Milzey Carrasco, and Tiffany Boyne. Special shout-out to Teresa, whose vision it was to have a Women of Color brunch here in City Hall. Also on the planning committee, former city councilwoman Barb Wilson and Judge Jody Ristredson and our own councilwoman Faith Craig. They did an amazing, amazing job and that brunch will continue in a much bigger way. It was very moving, very inspiring. And if you are interested in seeing the videos, the testimony that a five women shared about their stories related to education, empowerment, perseverance, moving, helping the next one and survival, I would be happy to make sure that those videos are available to all of you. Next, I want to talk about our strategic plan. Earlier today, I participated in GovLove, which is a podcast about local government. The topic was strategic planning and how to successfully plan and execute within- The topic was strategic planning and how to successfully plan and execute within city government. This was timely because I've nearly wrapped up a strategic plan tour, as I've been calling it, and I thought I'd give council a quick recap of where I've been and what I've been talking about. In addition to my State of the City address, the plan was presented to the Elm Street Steering Committee, Neighbors United, West Lancaster Jewels, residents who live in the annex portion of the city, SOE, Chamber of Commerce, Wake Up to the Issues Forum, the Chairperson's Council, the Lancaster City Alliance Board. Next week, I'll be in Churchtown and I have at least three other sessions to reschedule due to snow that they had to be canceled. So it's been a very busy time of being out in our neighborhoods and talking to our nonprofit community and business community as well. In addition to these community presentations, YouTube and Facebook have extended our reach. 583 people have viewed the State of the City and the videos have garnered over 22,000 views. Each of those videos is available on Facebook. They address in a succinct way each of our strategic priorities and I encourage you, if you haven't watched them, to watch them. The lancasterblackbyblack.com website has had 1,500 unique visitors and 2,100 sessions since its launch on January 22nd. As you know, the rollout of the strategic plan was an experiment to increase the number of people who know about the plan and the work underway to realize each of the four strategic priorities: strong neighborhoods, safe streets, secure incomes, and sound government. And I'm pleased with the uptake and the number of people in our community that know about the strategic plan and know the work that this administration is doing to address, address those priorities. And lastly, I just want to mention staffing. Jess King starts on Monday and the first order of business is a trip to Harrisburg to discuss all things budget-related. And so while we've passed our budget for 2019, we're already looking ahead to 2020 and the years that follow. And quite honestly, I just keep coming back to that last page in the budget presentation that shows our five-year projections. I want to thank council for your assistance and patience during this time of transition. Being in office without a chief of staff for the last two months has been incredibly stressful and I'm looking forward to the help and I'm particularly looking forward to working with Jess. Additionally, interviews have begun for the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. We are still accepting applications for this position as well as the Director of Public Works. I will continue to keep council apprised of our progress in filling these vacancies. That concludes my report, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. With my report this evening, I will be using my entire brief time to discuss the UPMC conversation. I want to thank the residents who've come out consistently to share their concerns, to be honest about what they're looking for. I will say that this evening's request to seek a public health advocate at the state level, as far as I'm, as far as I remember, the first specific concrete legislative action that council can do that has been asked of us. And I can tell you, absolutely, I would be in support of that. That is something that is within our purview to support you in. And depending on what the language of that would look like, that would be indeterminate and something that with your meeting coming up on Monday would be too quick of a turnaround to get the actual language done. But I can certainly tell you right now, the state certainly has a responsibility to provide services similar to that. Also, the county as well. I had a colleague, a council colleague of mine, share with me information that around the country, there are many, many states that have counties that spend a significant amount of money on improving the quality of healthcare within the municipalities in those counties. We don't have that set up right now. Is that something that conversation we should be having? Of course it is. So yes, to answer your question directly, I would love to see language on that and I'd love to work on language with you to get that to the lieutenant government. Other answers to questions. I've had zero meetings with UPMC. Frankly, they could care less about council president. My guess is they have not requested a meeting. I've been turned one down and I haven't asked for one myself because frankly, I know they wouldn't take it. Secondly, I haven't had any information on future plans. Again, I doubt they would share them with me if they had any, but they have not shared any information with me. The only contact I've had with UPMC are two certified letters that were sent to me telling them actions that they had already reported in the newspaper, but they just decided to send me a certified letter letting me and County Commissioner Chair Josh Parsons know. Those letters, I actually shared with council members at meetings so they could see the pretty much ridiculousness of sending me a certified letter when you literally published it in the paper two days ago. That's the extent of the contact that I've had with UPMC. When it comes to the pilot, two years ago, November 14th, 2017, Mayor Gray at that time gave a report to city council. During that report, I'm going to read a couple of sections of this just so that the public is aware of the fact that two years ago, this was read into the record in this chamber. Early this year, UPMC Pinnacle Health assumed ownership of Lancaster Regional Medical Center. Last week, the Lancaster County, and this is key, last week, now again, this isn't current last week, this is 2017. Last week, the Lancaster County Assessment Board of Appeals ruled in favor of a request by UPMC to declare the hospital exempt from property taxes. Under previous owners, the property taxes paid to the city were approximately $300,000. Soon after the hospital changed owners, I, and that would be Mayor Gray, met with representatives of UPMC Pinnacle to discuss a voluntary contribution in lieu of taxes, which is the pilot that we're talking about. I, again, Mayor Gray, advised UPMC that Lancaster General Health makes a pilot contribution of $1.5 million to the city each year. This contribution represents nearly 95% of what LG Health's tax liability would be if they weren't tax exempt. Additionally, Lancaster General Health maintains nearly 50 other properties on the city's tax rolls for which it pays a total of approximately $290,000 annually. UPMC, not surprisingly, as we know now, was not persuaded to follow LG Health's lead in this regard. Instead, UPMC countered with a proposed community contribution agreement for payments of $125,000 in 2018, $115,000 in 2019, and $100,000 per year afterwards. Further, in exchange for this pilot, all taxing jurisdictions must agree to not challenge the tax-exempt status of the properties. In addition to this city, these jurisdictions are School District of Lancaster, Warwick School District, and Lancaster County. If any of these fails to sign on to the agreement, there will be no pilot. My hope was to secure a contribution equal to the amount paid by the previous hospital owners. With this agreement, the city will see a $200,000 reduction in revenue from the hospital property that will need to be made up by city taxpayers when reassessment becomes effective in 2018. Now, I read that for a reason. Number one, that was publicly shared in 2017 to everybody, including council members. Number two, council members were not involved in the negotiation of that pilot. This was reported during a mayor's report. We were told this information, okay? Number three, some of the comments that I've heard about, this is a bad deal because it takes away the ability to sue. Frankly, I want to state a couple of things on that. Number one, I don't know if you're aware of how much lawyers cost nowadays, but suing UPMC would not be free. That money does not come from nowhere. That is literally taxpayer money that would be spent fighting, I mean, fighting UPMC that has nearly unlimited resources. I can tell you this, most taxpayers would look at me and say, no, we can fight that a different way. We'll fight them on a different front, but please don't spend several hundred thousand dollars in a battle that pretty much across the state we've already seen is ending either in a stalemate or tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars being lost. Secondly, the School District of Lancaster, everybody in here that I know loves this city loves the School District of Lancaster. There is no way that I would not sign on, and I'll say this right now publicly, there's no way I wouldn't sign on to this agreement if it meant the School District of Lancaster was going to lose out in nearly a million dollars of funding. The School District of Lancaster is one of the most chronically underfunded districts in the state of Pennsylvania. Our students, I'm a McCaskey grad, I'm a Lincoln grad, I'm a worker sham grad. There's no way I'm going to be the one that disrupts that agreement so that our kids can't get a million dollars in funding. Frankly, sometimes in the world, you don't get to make the easy decision. This was a decision where UPMC came to us and said point blank, you either agree to this or we're out. And let me remind people, this was not a negotiation. They either, we either took what they offered or they gave us nothing. A pilot is not a requirement. It is an offer. Because of their nonprofit status, which we could offer, we could argue till the cows come home whether they should be nonprofit. And I'm up for that argument, believe me. But the reality is they are considered a nonprofit. If Mayor Gray walks away from that table without signing that agreement, you know what happens? Nothing. Except the School District of Lancaster loses about a million dollars in funding, our kids lose even more funding, the city of Lancaster loses funding, Warwick loses funding, and the county loses funding. That's the only thing that happens. There was no alternative other than, now, you can argue, don't sign the agreement, sue them, and let's go to court. Fine. That's easy to say on the sidelines, but say that to Dr. Ralph from the School District of Lancaster. I would love to hear her opinion on that, to just fight the fight and see what happens because that would be money from the school district that should be going to teachers and students' education that's going to be fighting in a courtroom against an organization that has already proven that they're willing to spend millions of dollars to fight that fight. Now, I'm only saying these things because this is a long-term conversation. UPMC has been acting in the western part of the state in bad faith in some situations and everybody has seen that. Here in Lancaster City, the information that council received was almost at the exact same time as the public received it. We weren't in the loop, we weren't brought in, we weren't discussed. We were told, by the way, we're going to close our doors. There you go. So the frustration from some of the members of council that you have seen and some of the lack of responses that you have gotten, and I won't speak for other members, I'll speak to myself, is there are limitations to what council can do. When you propose the public advocate resolution, absolutely. Call me tomorrow and we can talk about legislation. I can do that. I can support you. Will I stand up? Will I stand with Lieutenant Governor Fetterman and stand up and say, this is wrong, what's happening and we need more medical support in our community? Absolutely. I'll say that all day. But the reality is I don't operate in the business of providing false hope to people, saying I can give them something that my position does not allow me to do. I think it's wrong. I think politicians do it too often and it's embarrassing. I don't like it. So if you ask me for something concrete and I can do it and I believe in it, you're going to get a yes right away. If you ask me something that I can't do, I'm not going to say nice words to you to pretend I can and then have you walk away thinking I can help you and I can't because I think it's disingenuous and I think too many people do it. So all that being said, I just want to clarify where we are right now. I have no idea what UPMC is planning to do next. What I have been made aware of is this, they have made their pilot payment for this year. They have paid that. They are also, the consideration now that the hospital, the hospital's been closed, there is a reevaluation of whether or not it is going back on the tax rolls or not. That is a current conversation that's happening right now because if they are no longer operating a hospital, then they're no longer operating a nonprofit business. We see that, right? Therefore, we are immediately in conversations right now trying to figure out, well, since you chose not to operate a business, looks like you're going to be paying more taxes then because frankly, you're not doing anybody a nonprofit good right now. So those conversations are going to be happening as we speak. But I just want you to know from me personally, this has been something that's been on my heart. I do sympathize with the passion that you come with at council. And please don't ever take my lack of responding directly to something as if I don't care. I don't want to respond to things that I don't have an answer to. And when I share that I don't have an answer, I can understand in our current political climate, people go, I don't believe you. Well, I can only tell you what the truth is. And the truth is, I don't know where they're going next. I don't believe they're going to tell me first. My guess is you'll probably find out in the paper before you find me. But what I will say lastly is this, if you come to me and say, Council President Reichenbach, I want you to keep us in a loop as to what is happening because our voices should be heard and the public should have a say in what happens next on that property, absolutely you should. There should absolutely be meetings on what happens next in that property. There should absolutely be conversations about if UPMC decides to sell, what happens next? Absolutely. And I'm here for that. Let's talk about it. Let's figure it out, have as many meetings as we need to so that the public has proper input there. That is something we can do. So I would just encourage you to continue to push the passion that you have. You're right, it has been heard. It certainly has been heard. People in my community are talking about it and I'm pretty proud of that fact that the conversations are happening. And that's how things get done. Again, forgive my passion on it. It's, sometimes we sit up here and I think people assume the fact that there's not a connection with the public that's sitting right here in the audience. I have a child who was born in St. Joe when it was called St. Joe. I spent many hours with family members who were dying in St. Joe. And I'm not saying that for you to say woe is me. What I'm saying is I'm part of this community too. I'm not sitting up here removed. I don't live in some glass house. I have memories of that building too and I have family who used that building too. And I'm certainly not rich, so I don't have the opportunity to go to some high-fluent hospital to go to. So these things impact people on this dais as well and I would just ask people to try to remember that even though it's difficult sometimes while we're passionate. Again, forgive me for the long-winded comments, but I just wanted, I wanted to be fair and answer a lot of the questions that people have had. And I want to also be clear, that is my commentary, that is not represent other council members or their experience and I don't want it to be construed as such. That being said, I want to hand it off to my council colleagues if they have other comments regarding this or anything else they want to share.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir?
If I may.
Yes?
So when I sent you that data from the Kaiser Family Foundation, I just want to go over a little bit of what it says.
Can you clarify to the public what that is?
I can't. So the Kaiser Family Foundation is Kaiser Permanent Day's charitable and research arm. One of the things that they do is evaluate the percentage of hospitals and hospital facilities in a given state and across the country that are owned by local and state governments, thank you, that are owned by local and state governments, owned by nonprofits or operated for profit. Eight municipalities or eight states, including the District of Columbia, have 0%. Pennsylvania is just ahead of them in second or eighth place, depending on how you take it, at having 0.5% of its hospitals or hospital facilities being managed, which puts another 42 states ahead of us in this regard. I think everybody in the room knows, my mother passed recently. My mother had a best friend, her name's Ruth. She's great. She's a nurse and a social worker. My mother had cancer for about 10 years and through that entire process, Ruth, by virtue of both knowing the medical and insurance systems, was able to do virtually everything for my mother, up to and including calling certain doctors and insurance personnel and calling them out of their names to get the desired result. And that made a big difference for my mother to have that kind of advocate. I guess the best definition of morality I have going is to want for everybody else what I want for my own family. California and New York have offices of patient advocacy or the Office of the Patient Advocate, which intervene in issues just like this instead of having Dr. Levine, the Surgeon General, intervene in one way and A.G. Shapiro intervene in another way and Auditor General Eugene T. Pasquale commenting in another way, that it goes in, in one place and that that person files suits, distributes data, advocates between health systems, hospitals, insurers for the people of those states. And I agree with you, Mr. President, and I agree with you, Tammy, that Pennsylvania's residents should have that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Other council comments?
I'll say that your mention of a public healthcare advocate was the first time I'd heard of it. So upon you mentioning that, I did some research and to try and learn more, the thing I came up with was the National Association of County and City Health Officials, which is a voice for local health departments, which informs policymaking. But I'd be interested in learning from your perspective, what research you came up with as well as what my fellow councilman just provided. I want to learn more, see what we can do in our own community.
All right. I have two short comments. The healthcare advocacy, can't say the word. Yeah, that's the word. It's not coming out clear. I would like to know more about that too because I don't know a whole lot about it. I've, I've read a little, but not enough to give me all the information I need to make a decision. As far as a resolution, I'd be interested in helping with the resolution as well. And on a different note, turning the whole page, the Women of Color brunch that we had on Saturday here in City Hall was phenomenal. We invoked the spirit of the ancestors, we asked permission from the elders that were present, women gave testimonies, a lot of networking was done, a lot of relationships were built, and a lot of those relationships, I'm hoping are everlasting. That's it. All done.
I guess I'm the last one? In reference to UPMC, it's very sad to see it go, but we have to think positive and in the future, see what we can do to make sure that everybody is taken care of. And in reference to the resolution, you obviously know that I would back that up and I'm here for the community, as I have always said, and do as much as I can for everyone in my capacity.
Thank you, councilwoman. Council members?
Mr. President?
Not last.
I think any resolution-
I think any resolution or discussion on health advocacy would be welcomed if we get the information in a timely manner for our April committee sessions. And I'm very interested in hearing more and getting more involved, so if you could get that information to us and we'll work on it. Thank you.
You have the comments? Sure. Councilman said it.
I just want to add, for the most part, you don't hear me and see me in public making comments in public, but I do support what you stand for and what you're trying to achieve. As far as UPMC is concerned, I'm totally disgusted with them. I may, won't call it, never got returned. What does that tell you? But I will support a resolution. I want to hear more about what you have to say. And I agree with Councilman Grupar, we should have the information as soon as humanly possible so we can discuss it at our April committee meetings. That's all I have, Council President, other than the fact that I support everything that's been said here tonight from this bench and I can't add anything more to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And just to clarify, Tammy, yourself or anybody else who has ideas specific to that, you know how to contact Mr. Harris? If not, you can contact me or any member of council. And don't feel like you have to have a, we're not asking you to have a ready-made, edited, perfect document. If you have ideas and have done research on what you're thinking, you can share that with us and we can certainly help you refine it and then share it back with you to see if it's something that you're looking forward to. Or if you have others, examples, you can share those as well. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yeah, Well People's First PA actually does already have a six-page brief and everything else around that.
Okay.
And I'm sure that our organization can even pre-draft the resolution for you all to look at it and go from there.
That would be wonderfully helpful. And we can, we can take a look at it, see, you know, review it with council in a public setting, you can be there as well, we can refine it, see what works and what doesn't. And I would suggest that, again, because of everything you have said for the last month or two, time is of the essence. It always is. Because this situation won't stay static. Something will happen, right? So the reality is, why not do things now? Let's do them now. So if you can provide that information, so again, any council member or Mr. Harris, we can refine it, make sure you're invited to the meeting, we can talk more about it and see if we can put something together that could work for everybody.
Now we should all go up to Harrisburg and rally at UPMC's headquarters.
Sure. I'm sorry, sure, I'm sorry.
I just want to respond to something short and just brief. The mayor said she was dismayed at some comments that were made. I had met with your former chief of staff and there were supposed to be other meetings that should have taken place, that your former chief of staff failed to communicate about that. The other thing is...
Well, I would ask, Pastor, if you have other things to share, I'd ask you to share them after the meeting with council members because...
I understand, but you gave her a chance to respond.
Well, because we were talking about a specific issue, you're not speaking about that issue.
I'm talking about something specific.
But not this specific issue. I should ask you to show respect for the...
I am talking about this specific issue. I'm talking about this specific issue.
Well, could you share that with council members after the meeting, please, sir?
There's other things that need to be considered.
And we can, and we can talk, they don't have to be talked about in the public forum for you to share that, you can share that with council members if you'd like those to be shared.
But some of those were directly shared about with me and mentioned my name.
And again, and as, as you mentioned, the mayor's name and others up here, so as protocol is for every meeting we have, if you wouldn't mind holding those comments till after the meeting or sharing them at the next meeting, that would just be how protocol is for every meeting we've had, I would just ask for that respect to do that. Because if not, then we would have back and forth through the entire meeting of people sharing things when something was said. Correct, because I asked her a specific question, so I offered her the opportunity to, and I think, I think you know that, you understand what I just shared with her. So I just appreciate, if you have comments to make to council members, feel free, as soon as the meeting's adjourned, to share them with anybody you'd like up here.
Mr. President.
Yes, sure.
Can you, if you don't, can you advise Tammy and Alia when you would need the information by, for us, for it to be distributed and discussed at the April committee meeting? I don't know, just what timeframe, I know you're a busy guy.
Certainly if I had it by the 20th, I could have one.
What date?
By the 20th, so that's about a week from, a week and a day, eight days from today? If there's an existing document, if it could just be forwarded to council and Bernie...
So you're talking about the six-page brief versus the draft of the resolution or...
Let's, let's start there, just getting what we can in our hands as soon as possible so we have the most information. And then as soon as you have a draft resolution, forward that along as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. With that being said, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
No.
Second?
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.